A lot of confusion about the basics of what CDG does. So I started with some foundational information here with our mission statement and our vision statement that I want to just recap really quick. So our mission is to improve the social and economic being of our community and the historic downtown district. By preserving and sharing our history and the unique identity by attracting and supporting small businesses and by engaging and connecting the community, overall with the vision that West Branch will thrive with an eclectic mix of old and new as a desirable visitor's destination and a place of hometown pride that shows in the vibrant downtown and the unique offerings. That's a mouthful, so I like to describe it more as our job as West Branch Community Development Group is to make sure that Main Street West Branch is a place that people want to be. So I want us to kind of think of all, everything that I talk about today or anytime that you think about how you can work with CDG through that lens of historic preservation and making sure that our community is a place that people want to be. So in action, because we are a accredited Main Street Iowa community, we follow the Main Street approach, which is a framework for preservation-based economic development and community revitalization. That includes four main points. That is promotion, so marketing, our unique characteristics to shoppers, new businesses, and visitors with things like advertising, special events, our piece of the festivals in town. And our current promotion chair is Erin Vincent, so I'll mention our key leaders as well so that you guys can kind of connect the dots of who's doing what in our organization. That second pillar is design, so that's helping to keep our Main Street in good physical shape, making sure that it looks really nice, which I think it does. And that's through building improvements, street furniture, landscaping. Shout out to Nick Schimman, our current design chair. The third pillar is economic vitality, so strengthening our community's economic assets by helping Main Street businesses to thrive and expand. That's been an extra challenge in the pandemic this year, but also helping to recruit new businesses to meet the market needs, which I think is a really big area of opportunity for CDG to work with you all more strategically in the future. And our current economic vitality chair is vacant, so that's an area again of opportunity. And then last but not least, organization. That is all of our volunteer and fundraising efforts. We are a volunteer-driven nonprofit organization, so we are always working to enlist and engage volunteers to make sure everyone is working towards these common goals. And our current org chair is Stephen Grace. Does anybody have any questions about those basics? Otherwise, I'll just run through some highlights about what we've been doing over the last quarter in each of these areas.
None on here.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just gonna talk at you then. Save your questions for whenever or holler at me, I'm flexible. So I'll start with some updates in that economic vitality field. You all probably saw that West Branch Community Development Group, in partnership with Main Street Iowa, released a survey to local residents in the month of July to get a better feel for how our community is feeling about COVID-19 as we enter through and kind of progress in the recovery stages. It was all online and it was, like I said, during the month of July. That was shared mostly via email and on our social media pages. We did have a decent response. We had 230 people take that survey, which is a statistically significant sample size for our population. And that survey gathered feedback on how comfortable and how likely our residents are to eat and shop local right then, but also in the future as we continue through this pandemic process. Also asked some questions about changing consumer preferences, like online shopping, curbside pickup, and their likelihood of attending events right now and longer term as we look at our future events, the festivals that we normally have a large hand in, and trying to get some data to help drive those decisions. So as expected, consumer comfort related to the pandemic was kind of split down the middle. We saw a lot of sort of 50/50 responses. About half of our residents responded that they are ready to get back and ready to kind of get back to normal, and half of them are very cautiously waiting until further notice. So nothing groundbreaking there, but we did have some interesting results that showed some strong preferences for outdoor events, 20% higher than indoor events. Outdoor seating at restaurants was preferred by 55% of the respondents. Continued curbside pickup was preferred by a whopping 87% of our respondents, so that's something that we'll be working with our business owners to hopefully continue in the future, helping them to kind of lay the foundation for success through the pandemic and beyond. They also increased, a significant increase in online shopping habits. Again, these are some things that are really driving what we're focusing our attention on right now. So you can see, based on the data that we collected from that survey, we've done things like the sidewalk sales in August, trying to lean into that opportunity for more outdoor shopping and eating opportunities. We have a permit request in now to do that again as part of our Fall Fest in October. So the feedback that we got from this survey will also heavily weigh into how we adjust Christmas past planning, and I'll speak to that a little bit in more detail here in a minute. Let's see, what else? We're also using this information to offer training and resources for our local retail shops especially. We have access to a free online sales platform due to our affiliation with Main Street Iowa this year. So we are really trying to help them develop the skills that they need to sell items online and lean into where that's needed, especially during this pandemic, but knowing that that will be an asset to them in the long run. And last but not least, of course, we're noting preferences for businesses that we think are most likely to succeed in West Branch and hoping that, once we survive this pandemic, we'll be able to focus on building some more long-term relationships with landlords and having a more strategic impact and getting the right businesses and the vacant spaces on Main Street so that we know that they are what our community wants to see there and more likely to actually thrive and align with the overall kind of strategic goal of Main Street somewhere people want to be. So those are some big things that we gained from that survey. And I think I sent that survey out to, I know I sent it to you Redmond. I think it got sent out to all of the council members a month or so ago when that was finalized. So feel free to dive into those numbers, they're really interesting. Also, some economic vitality updates. Couple new businesses in the district. I'm sure you have all seen and hopefully have been into shop at White Pumpkin Studio and Corridor Home Redesign this summer. We hosted ribbon cutting events for both of those. We were sorry to see Mexico Lindo move out of our district, but always grateful that they are still in town. And our downtown dollar campaign is still up and rolling. That launched over a year ago. As you likely know, it's a dollar-for-dollar gift certificate program. You purchased a gift certificate from our office. You can use that at any retailer or eateries in the Main Street district, really with the goal of encouraging residents to shop local, keeping the dollars here where we need them. We did have a pleasant surprise. The local Lions Club purchased $25 in downtown dollars for all 85 workers at Crestview this summer. So over $2,000 in downtown dollars went back into the district. So that's a nice example of how that can be used for overall community support. Moving on to the design area. We were happy to place eight new black metal benches throughout the Main Street district this summer. That was done due to a bequest donation that we received in addition to a grant that we applied for through the Community Foundation of Cedar County. And our business owners have the opportunity to request benches to be placed outside their storefronts, and we made that happen, so that's looking nice. Nick has also been busy with the flowers and plant, hanging planters on Main Street. Those are looking really great as well and maintained by volunteers. We'll be doing some switches to fall decor here soon. And something I'm very excited about. We are working right now with Brook Ventures to submit an application for the 2020 Main Street Challenge Grant. This is a grant opportunity that's available only to accredited Main Street Iowa programs with the primary goal of stimulating rehabilitation of historical buildings in Main Street districts like ours. So it's only, it's only available to the 55 Main Street Iowa communities. That award requires a one-to-one match by the building owner, so it's a pretty significant commitment from our landlords as well. We have not received that award since 2012, I believe, when Heritage Foundation received $30,000 to renovate the museum. This year, we will be asking for $75,000 in grant funding to support the Opera Block building. And that would include updates to electrical, air conditioning, plumbing, some residential changes in the upper floor units, and a full facade update. So replacing the rotten wood on the outside, tuck mounting that original brick, repainting, replacing the storefront windows and the doors. So that would be a really huge improvement and investment in our Main Street district. It's a competitive grant process, but it's all come together really nicely. I'm putting the polishing it up to submit it this week. The deadline is Friday. And I feel like we have a pretty good shot at maybe receiving this because it is a very glamorous project that tends to score well in that type of grant situation. So we're excited about that. Under the promotion umbrella, as you guys know, we received overwhelmingly positive feedback from business owners and shoppers after our sidewalk sales in August. We kind of threw that together fast and furiously with the cancellation of Hometown Days and some feedback from our business owners being concerned about the reduced traffic in town that weekend. We had great feedback about spreading things out outside. Everybody looked to be safely social distancing, but also an absolute uptick in shopping and eating downtown, mostly shopping. It was, it was a bigger success for retail than it was for eateries, which is typical in that type of promotion. Overall, we are very happy with that and we hope to do something very similar in the fall. We actually invested in all the signage generically so that we could host this type of event repeatedly without having any expenses on our end. So that's something that's in the works with promotions. Christmas Past is just around the corner now. We have begun our committee meetings just last week. So when I put this together, we are just getting ready to meet with our volunteer committee. Our board had already discussed the need to make some major changes to the traditional elements due to those CDC guidelines and working closely with Cedar County Public Health this year. They did give us the go-ahead to continue planning, knowing that anything could change at any moment and we may need to make major changes, so we are proceeding with caution. Notably, our board did vote to cancel the carriage and wagon rides this season due to an inability to ensure proper social distancing. We just didn't feel comfortable sitting people facing one another for more than 10 minutes and not being able to sanitize those between riders. So we are actively exploring some other festive ideas. And actually, I'm excited to share that we just approved plans to bring in a synthetic ice skating rink as the headliner of this event this year. So we are working out some details, ironing out some ideas there, but there's actually one available locally in Iowa City to rent. So it comes with everything you need, the fencing, the safety precautions, the skates to rent, and would be a really fantastic opportunity, we think, for families to come out and have a festive, memorable kind of headliner of Christmas Past while we continue to work to change some of those other traditional elements to be more socially distanced. But this one, we feel we can adequately adhere to all the COVID-19 precautions. We know that we can require reservations. We'll stagger start times so that it's always socially distanced. Masks will be required. We can sanitize the skates between users, some pretty simple things that can be done to ensure that we're meeting all the requirements and doing everything we can to keep our community safe, but still hopefully a morale boost that people appreciate since it's been so long since we could do something like that. So like I said, this is in the very early stages. We do plan to solicit sponsors for this. It does have a lesser price tag than the carriage rides usually do, so that's a positive. And our insurance provider didn't seem to think that that would be any riskier than horses on ice. So that's, that's positive so far too. We do plan to have kind of a fun way to promote this to ultimately make sure that we are driving traffic and sales to our Main Street businesses during this time of the pandemic especially. We know that many are struggling. We will be requiring a fee to reserve a time for the ice skating rink, but then reimbursing that fee fully as downtown dollars when you come to skate so that it drives you to go and make purchases at local eateries and restaurants. So we're really excited about that. Let me see here, what else? Under promotions, we are also, and we were selected as one of the communities to host the Smithsonian Voices and Votes exhibit. This is a traveling exhibit where the last stop for the year. It was delayed significantly with the pandemic, but it's back on track now. So it will be here in West Branch in Town Hall from November 28th to January 10th. So we'll have lots of advertising and promotions going for that. More details to come. I admittedly don't know all that yet. And last but not least, organization. Like I said, our economic vitality chair is currently vacant. We are actively seeking a volunteer leader to help fill that need on our Board of Directors. We are always engaging new volunteers and trying to get them up to speed and figure out what committees they can best serve on to support everything that's going on in our Main Street district. Fundraising, we do have some fun new fundraising campaigns in the works. We hope to launch something new next month. I won't mention that yet until we get all the details figured out. But some of our fundraising efforts were impacted by the pandemic as well, and we know looking at next year, we'll likely be facing some reduced fundraising capacities as the economy continues to be impacted by this. So we are taking a close look at our budget and realigning our goals with the immediate needs of our businesses and just kind of changing how things are done to focus on getting through the now. Our largest fundraiser of the year, Sweets for Success, is still scheduled for February 2021, so that will continue to go on unless, you know, there's unforeseen changes in this craziness. Last but not least, I included all of the members of our current board members and advisory members just so you all are aware. But I'm happy to answer any questions or speak more thoroughly about anything that you'd like to hear about. And I'd also love feedback about how often you would like us to provide this type of report. If you prefer written or spoken or both, I'm here to do what you need us to do.
I thought of one question is, do you have any pulse of how online sales are? Are most businesses booted up for online sales?
No, they're really not. We're kind of a split district. I think, I would probably guess, half of our stores are set up for online sales. A few of them have kind of dipped their toe in the water right now, just selling a few things unofficially on Facebook, which is working okay for them. But we hope that the new shopIowa.com platform, especially being free this year, will really allow them to gain some confidence in that area and expand that.
Yeah, I think that sounds like it should help.
It's a really simple platform too. I've been very impressed by it.
I think these reports, I love this, this is great, good report. I don't think every month is necessary, every two months possibly. Something from you guys, what do you think? Every quarter? Yeah, every three months.
Quarterly, yeah. Quarterly is probably more doable for me.
Yeah, we don't need every two months.
This is pretty extensive too. This probably covers more than a quarter, so it won't be so long every time, unless, of course, you know, we're so very efficient.
This is really, really helpful to, we know what you do and to help us all know what you do.
Good. I would also love any feedback about the ideas that we're working on for Christmas Past. What is, what's your gut feeling about ice skating rink?
Where would you put it?
I've talked to Kevin about putting it outside the fire station on either side there, and he thinks that's likely workable. Or I also pinged Pete already thinking maybe, is it Second Street there, right in front of the fire station where the tractor poles usually are? Possibly there. It'll depend on how long and if, and if NPS would approve something like that.
The downtown dollars refund idea, that's a great idea.
I think that's key. I think it will actually, I think they'll want us to do that every year, honestly. It will drive more sales than, than carriage rides generally do.
How was the sidewalk sales? Okay. You gonna do another one this fall or?
Yeah, we heard all feedback. Business owners said they absolutely saw an uptick. Lots of people said that they actually, well, not lots, but I think of the eight retailers, three of them told me that they had more sales than they normally do during Hoover Hometown Days because people were actually there specifically to shop. So that's positive. They really needed a win like that. Lots of shoppers made a point to reach out to us and tell us if they felt really safe shopping in our community, which I think is a really big win. We wanted to make sure that no matter what we do, we're not, we're not looking to only boost sales for one, one day or one weekend. We want to make sure that people feel safe shopping here continually through the pandemic. And I think we, I think we achieved both of those goals with sidewalk sales. So we definitely hope to do that again in October. I just submitted my permit request last week. It's October 9th and 10th is what we're looking at.
I can't think of any more questions, anyone?
I like the fact that you have reached out to Brooks and really working on the Opera Block. It's needed, needed an update for about a few years. Can't wait to see it completed, if you get the grant.
Yeah, I hope, I hope it happens.
Yeah.
Fingers crossed. Everybody cross your fingers. It's a good one. I think it's a strong application. They've been really great to work with, so that's positive too. But appreciate the feedback.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you very much, Jesse. I see Nikki there. Thanks for coming, Nikki.
You're welcome. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you. Public comment. Anyone wishes to speak? We'll hear you now. If not, we're gonna move on. Okay, item F. Someone gave me a motion to approve the council meeting minutes of August 17th. A special events permit to close off in street for three varsity football games. Motion to approve the appointment of Brian Pierce to the West Branch Parks Rec Commission and a motion to approve the claims. Someone give me that motion, please. Nick? Jerry will second. Brian Pierce is a great asset there. I think he'll do good. Any other comments? Okay, we'll vote. Leslie, please.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, we have a public hearing. Approving the budget and plan for funded activities for the West Branch Food Pantry Project. This is part of a CDVG grant? Is that a federal grant or state?
Yes.
And in the, in the public hearing, I have to make some announcements. By the CDVG grant, yep. So a lot of it is covered in the plan that's in the next agenda item. But I have to state that we did bring forward and the council did approve the following items. An excessive force resolution. A residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. A equal opportunity policy. A fair housing policy. A code of conduct. A procurement policy. And, and we are going through the public hearing as we speak. In that, want to give you what the purpose and goal of our project is, is in response to COVID-19 infectious disease response, that we would look to distribute food to our most vulnerable populations. And also, we have the goal of distributing more nutritious food to show that the community is pooling its resources together to meet those needs. So in doing that, there's several agencies and nonprofits and groups, or community groups that have come together. I don't have to go through all of those from, from this standpoint, but that it has been a community-wide effort. And the grant is for $25,000. That will go for various activities. By the way, those activities have been forwarded to the state for review and, and they haven't responded back, which, which they pretty much told me wouldn't. So once we approve or go through this process tonight, we'll finally be in a position to actually begin to start spending and reimbursing the funds. So the location is primarily going to be at our food pantry, but also in part City Hall. The contact person for the program is going to be myself. And the phone number that I can be reached, that is area code 3196435888. And I think I covered everything. So for all intents and purposes of the public hearing, if there's any other questions, comments, or any comments from the community, I'll try to answer.
Okay, is there anyone on Zoom that wants to, that's here to speak on the behalf of this public hearing? Colleen or Mazie?
Yeah, this is Eric from B&amp;K. I'll just speak if I'm called upon on the, on the West Branch Bridge stuff, so.
Oh. Okay. Okay. That's, might be it for the public comment then. Gavel out of the public hearing. And then we have a resolution. Resolution 1926. Approving the budget and plan for the funded activities for the West Branch Food Pantry Project. Someone give me a motion to approve. Colton and Dean will second. Any comments? Okay, let's get it approved.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Okay, so what's the next step, Redmond? We gotta get approval, it's actually.
So now I can actually spend money. So there's going to be several programs in here. They can be invoiced to the city and we can then pass those on to the state for reimbursement. We can also have some improvements to the facility for ADA access. We can start that. And we can bill our staff time for doing an in-house, running an in-house and in the back with door and some shelving, that kind of thing so that people can access the back and not have to go through trying to maneuver the step and stuff. And then there were some other dollars set for hot meals, downtown hot meals. Sounds like I might be able to work with Jesse and just be able to move those funds directly over. Then she just needs to make sure that they're going for restaurants and that we can then, you know, pass them out, have to pass them out at food pantry and other places, churches, and all those kinds of things. So we'll just start coordinating those things and now we, we can just start sending the bills.
Okay, thank you. All right, item three, resolution 1927. Approving a change order number eight in the amount of $0 for the College Street Bridge Replacement Project. Give me a motion somewhere.
Move.
Colton and Nick. This is just changing quantity. Is that where? B&amp;K is here for?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So it comes up after my, Colleen, my wife. Yeah, so this is just zeroing out. The DLT wanted to zero everything out so they could track it in the morning. So they requested us to submit a change order to move items around so it's easier for the audit.
Okay, good enough. Any other questions? State requires it.
Not very often you get a change order for zero.
I like this one.
Yeah, well, the next one's even better.
I know.
Okay, let's vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
All right. Item four, resolution 1928. Approving the pay estimate number 11 in the amount of a credit to West Branch in the amount of $9.61 for the College Street Bridge project.
Move.
Ready to get out of here. Colton and Nick. Okay, Eric, we're getting money back.
Yeah, so $9 and whatever that is, it's a credit back. It was just a typo error on one of the pay apps and we caught it, so we wanted to fix it. When we release the retainage, next, next council meeting will deduct the $9 in something out of the retainage fee.
Let's vote, Leslie. Go ahead.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
We don't win very often. There's a small win. Wins the win.
Resolution 1929, approving a, accepting the public improvements for the constructed and completed for the College Street Bridge Replacement Project. Motion, please. Nick? You second. Jerry? All right, we get to accept it now. You comment? Go.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
All right, gotta show the bridge.
So I'll need that form signed by the mayor and I'll have to come get that tomorrow to submit it to the state.
All right. Item seven, resolution 1931, approving an agreement for services to conduct a technology security assessment. What do I do? Oh, Max. All right, 1930.
You might want to know if he's hiring or not.
Resolution, hiring Max Coover for the full-time streets maintenance worker one position in the Department of Public Works. Give me a motion somewhere. Jerry and Nick? Max should be a good fit.
Yep, I agree. Good decision. I totally agree, yep.
I think we have some good, really good candidates. Hopefully, we'll hire somebody in a few more months or so, and I think.
Yep, I will say, Matt, myself, Orden, and the guys at the shop all interviewed and Max was number one, everybody praised. Which was a very competitive group, a very good group of coworkers.
Okay, I got a motion, right?
Yep.
Let's vote, please.
Councilperson Sexton?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 1931. Welcome to the club, Max. Resolution 1931. Approving an agreement for services to conduct a technology security assessment with Marco Technologies in the amount not to exceed $3,500. Motion, please. Jerry?
Second.
Tom? Just got one question on this, and what exactly are we getting? This is just a survey? A survey of our systems?
Our strengths and vulnerabilities.
Then there could be recommendations to?
There'd be recommendations how to fix it.
There probably will.
At additional cost.
Correct. Okay.
There you go.
That's what I need to know.
It's diagnostic.
Yeah.
I don't like hiring the mechanics.
What do we have and what's good, what's bad?
Yeah. Every time I take my truck to the we can't, the same thing happens.
Yeah.
Go change your oil and it'll cost you $500.
I need a sensor. Okay. I think I got a motion. Yeah. Go ahead.
Sexton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 1932. A resolution of intent to construct the Wapsey Creek widening at Veronic Park, at the Veronic Park Project and approve the acquisition of property via eminent domain. So, Nick will second. Motion, Jerry will second.
I will say, with Kevin, who is in Corvilles, City Council meetings tonight, so he can be he basically said, this is just the first step. We're going to have tons of opportunity for public comment and, and public discussion. But this allows him to put the public notice and publish it in the paper. So, and he needs to get that in by end of the week.
To hit for the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay, great, let's keep moving. You want to say, you want to say a little bit about that grant that we? Yeah, so, the Lower Cedar River Watershed Management Authority, which we are members of, is applying for a grant. We have applied, I believe, the other night. We did. Mary?
I gave the support letter and?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Apply for a grant to do the design work on this project. And potentially, as later on down the road, the construction work for this project. But the first phase is to do an environmental assessment, which would have to be done in the design work. The grant would pay for that. And we're bundling this grant together with a little city north of, east of Cedar Rapids. I can't remember the name of it. Bertram? They kind of have the same problem we do. But we're kind of shovel-ready on this one. And then the other project.
We're just starting the eminent domain. What do you mean we're shovel-ready?
Yeah, all right.
We're asking money for a design.
We've been talking about it for a long time. We have an engineer's estimate already, though. Oh, also, this, the grant would cover design work for all the upstream projects, too. So that's a lot. Anyway, that's off track a little bit, but we need to get this approved right now to keep moving forward. Any other discussion? Go ahead.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dean?
Yeah.
Okay, resolution 1933, authorizing a request for proposals and accepting a lowest responsible bid for the services of brush grinding services. Motion someone? Nick and Jerry? Yeah, let's get it out there and
yeah, this is one thing that we need to do so we can start trying to get some reimbursement from all of the state.
I was going to say, why don't we just keep using the same people? Do we think that's not they're cheaper? Are they expensive or what?
Really more so the process. This is almost like the excessive force and all the other stuff we had to go through. So, and it's reasonable, so we get it from it.
Good.
Cut it out, we can sell it, firewood. It's hard work. So, I, I've talked with Matt, I just once, at one time. Talked to Roger a little bit, but I think this, this is, is a prime example why we need to get that brush pile out of town. We need to get it out in the county somewhere, mile or two away where we can burn, where we can burn this, so that it doesn't, doesn't cost us $10,000 to $15,000 every time we need to mulch this plow.
No, we got mountains of mulch. What are we going to do with a lot of that stuff?
Exactly. We have no, no way to get rid of the mulch. Yeah.
Can't really sell it.
Pretty much just spread it out and use it for ground cover.
So Jerry's idea is to either buy an acre or lease an acre or acres out of town.
I, or. Yeah, I think, I think we could find acres. Yeah, we can find a farmer that we could, you know, say, we'll give you an X amount of dollars a year.
Low CSR.
Well, there's just some, just some ground just on the other side of the creek, on, just on the other side of the sort of, and they own farm.
Yeah, but we can't burn anything. That's the PNG. That's our issue, and the interstate. It's always been our issue. It burns for so long that when the wind changes, it takes the smoke across the interstate or PNG can't, we get in trouble. PNG can't have any smoke in their building. My thought is, north of town a little bit, that that's something to think about, because.
But you got some county property?
I don't, but you know, I mentioned Roger, maybe a place or two that might might be.
Yeah, Jerry's got a couple ideas. Okay, we'll, we'll keep working on that.
Reach out to the U.
So.
About to make piles of mulch.
Where?
The U.
University?
Burn wood chips in the, in that river.
Yeah, but how much money would it cost to truck it over?
They gotta be pelletized. Got to send them to Wisconsin to be pelletized. Switch grass.
Are they using switch grass? Yeah, I know they used to do a whole bunch.
Makes too much sense to burn more.
Yeah. Makes too much ice, probably. I don't know, I was at, ever doing corn filings.
Okay, I think we're ready for a vote to get this RFP out. Go ahead.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yeah.
Sexton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
All right, item 10, resolution 1925. Accepting and approving the city's street finance report for fiscal year 2020. I'm sure Gordon's been working hard on this.
So move.
Colton, you got a second? Nick? You have a comment? Let's vote. Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yeah.
Sexton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, Redmond.
All right. So, update, we did not get the grant that we've been pursuing for the wastewater. That's the, the bad news. The good news is that we've done so much work on preparing that application that ECIA thinks that we might be able, just to repackage it and go after a Iowa Economic Development Authority grant for public works. So we tried to go for it after, under COVID, and we didn't get it. And so, we believe we might have a better shot to try and go after it under public works. And we kind of ran it by the federal guy who works with the state on the program, and he thought it would, it would account. So, they're not going to charge us any additional money to put it together, because they're just going to kind of change some things around that a little bit here and there. And go up for, go for it underneath that. So, I told them, yep, go ahead and do that. It's not going to cost us any money and keeps us live for a little while longer. So, we should be hearing about our IUP, which is our designation that will allow us to start getting funding for, financing, I should say. It's not going to be funding, it's going to be financing for our design process, so that we can start our design. So, I think they said September 15th around, so we should be hearing about that. I'm pretty sure that should be accepted. They pretty much do. They just want to make sure that we have a way to repay financing and all that kind of stuff, which, which we do. On the COVID stuff, I wanted to share, I got a couple calls and I said I would bring, bring the concerns to council attention. One call and one email, which basically was saying, hey, I'd like to see folks on the Zoom meeting wearing masks. They, they wanted me to bring that to your attention, so I'm doing it. But, as you know, the numbers are going up. Particularly around University of Iowa, we're in a really weird spot, because the county numbers has Cedar County and Johnson County. And we don't know how much of Johnson County is counted in, and what the Cedar County is with the numbers that are on the, you know, on the map there. So, we kind of merged between the two counties, and since they don't tell us localities, what exactly cases we have, we, we, all we can do is just be cautious and, and look at those overall county numbers as some kind of guidance of where we are. But, that's pretty much, pretty much it. So, it's just those two comments, but I wanted to bring those, that to your attention. I'm going to assume that we're going to continue to move forward with the way we've been doing it now with Zoom and, and coming into the chambers here. But if there's any change, because, you know, if we look at the numbers, they are going in the wrong direction right now. Let me know, so we can adjust, but we have a pretty big code enforcement action happening tomorrow with an abatement of 203. So, we went through our new policy, which started out with even an additional step with a courtesy notification, violation notification, final violation notification, and then an abatement placard, which got put on the door. Notification of all those things. We also emailed, tried to email, attempted to contact. So all those things were done. There was not a request for a hearing, which was within his right to do, and he just chose not to avail himself of that. So, I also double-checked everything with League of Cities before we pulled it trigger with the contractor. And everything seems to be in order. So, with all that being said, it will not surprise me if this somehow turns into a district court situation later on. Especially when, because anybody can sue anything. So, that doesn't mean the court will give it much credence, but we should still be prepared just in case. But, I'm pretty comfortable that we did. Not all the eyes, we will be taking a junk vehicle off the site. And there will be some pretty substantial cleanup. And I did notice, and it does look like he's picked up some things, but there's also going to be some grass cutting and vine, volunteer trees, just the whole thing we didn't really do last time. We actually have ordinance to address it this time. So, it may be every, every bit of what it was last year, and maybe even be a little bit more.
The contractors will do all that, right? We're not going to do it.
We're not, yep. All those things. So, and then and this is something we don't have to do. I was advised that it might be something that we consider. Is there some items that I, I'm pretty sure can be considered valuable, even though in the letter, he's been instructed to remove anything that he thought was valuable. But there's still things like chainsaws and some things, and so the thought was, and some cities have done this, where they kept it. We do have a little room in our evidence facility. We could keep it for three months or so. Just in case it becomes an issue, or we can just say, hey, it's been discarded and not deal with it. We have the flexibility in either way. What it, way it was told to me was an example that was used in Iowa City, actually, where a contractor even had like a skid loader in his yard, and the house was to be demolished, and he wouldn't come get the skid loader. They knew that was valuable. And they still seized it and wanted to auction it off. So, they believe that we need to do that. We're in the right, but there's the other thought of being kinder and gentler.
I would, I would start out being kinder and gentler and keep that stuff for a while. That's how I would approach it.
I was kind of, you guys disagree.
I, I agree with you, but if I put a limit on it, three months. If, after three months, it goes, just got value, we somehow.
I'm going to play devil's advocate on the deal. Why give them the opportunity to come get his stuff, just so we can clean that crap up again in, in a year?
I was going to say the same thing. It's just going to go right back to where it was.
We're going to do it anyway. I have a feeling we're just going to, this is an annual, every two-year thing.
Yes, I mean, we're going to pick it up again.
It's just, it's.
It has been history. That, that, you can't argue that. I mean, it has been history.
I mean.
I guess I was looking at more of a legal standpoint than that.
Yeah, I have a feeling that it's valuable. Once again, it hurt us to keep it for three or four months.
We don't have to give it back to him.
I guess that would be my.
And we could charge rent on it, too, for having to store it, or storage. I mean.
Actually, what I, I would just, you keep it for three months, and if he's paid off his bill for the cleanup and he wants his stuff back, he can have it, but if he ain't paying his bill off. Sell it, put it towards his bill.
It may not get paid until taxes are paid on the property, which could be 18 months from now, or we don't know when.
That's unfortunate.
It could be 18 months.
If he's waiting for tax time, I mean, you know, he can come in and write a check any time he wants.
Okay. I think I Okay, so, that's, that's great feedback. I'll stick on that. October 5th, the council wanted to hear the Bahard subdivision proposal, so we're not doing a formal hearing. It's mostly a courtesy informational review. So, that's on the next P and Z meeting, and should be before council October 5th. Think that's oh, and then the last thing you'll see attached is updated approach on our certificate of occupancy process. So, a group of us in, in the building division has come together to kind of discuss. We kind of had, we, I think we started off with trying to be kinder and friendlier, working with the builders to offer temporary occupancy permits, which have kind of got a little to offer temporary occupancy, uh, permits, which have kind of got a little squirrely and out of hand. So we want to kind of rear that back some. And so we, uh, kind of mirrored some, um, policy that we got from, um, um, Iowa City and Terry's familiar with, and we kind of worked those through the process of how it worked here. And, um, that's basically the basis for this letter. So we can, uh, required certain things to be in escrow or have a letter of credit when, um, weather issues come up or, uh, things that stretch in between seasons that we still want to keep folks motivated to keep working through. So.
So this letter will go out to when we hand out the building permit app. Then you know, okay. It, it, there's no sod on the site, no sidewalk or no driveway during the months of, uh, when, winter. They need to give us an escrow, guarantee that it gets done eventually, because you've had a few that just didn't get done.
It still aren't done.
Yeah, it's still working. So hopefully this, this will help that problem. Okay.
Is there a time limit set on this escrow? I mean, somebody built a house and they completed in December and they can't get sod down.
We have to April fifteenth before we put that.
You know, we talked about that in the meeting, that the, the certificate of occupancy would go until like June first. So most likely those wouldn't happen until like February and then June first, we'd have to determine what that was. But that is the only time to give one is if it was from October fifteenth, April fifteenth. So there'd be that window.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is, if somebody can't put sod in, we don't want them to escrow that money and then wait till.
A year.
September and lay sod again when sod starts cutting in first of May or.
I don't know if that's in here or not. If that's addressed.
Same way with sidewalks and.
Driveways.
Driveways. I mean, uh, there should be a time limit. I mean, we, this, the issue we had with this was that somebody waited two years to sod their yard.
Right.
Right. So there has to be some kind of a.
Well, if that money's escrowed and it's not done by X amount of time, we just hire.
We should probably say how long you can stay in escrow.
Yeah, it needs to have a.
Needs to have a timeframe.
Three to six month timeframe to get it done.
It's like thirty days.
Well, not if it's February.
No, thirty days from, say, April fifteenth.
Gotcha. I see. Okay.
Forty-five days or sixty days, but, but.
So that's.
Needs to have a time limit on it.
Okay, that's a good, good, uh, good catch.
I'll work that in somewhere and I'll turn it over again.
All right, Kevin Olson's not here, so, uh, any other staff? I see Melissa's on. Matt.
I'd like to say something, Roger.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I want to say thank you to Jeff Reed's class, uh, PE class. They came in and they swept downtown and cleaned up that quite a bit last week. And then they did a little bit of work up at the cemetery with Matt also and break some more sticks up and, and helped out a lot. So I want to say thank you to them for that. That was nice. And then, um, we have an event on Saturday. It's a drive-in puppet show. And, um, there's still a couple of spots for cars. If anybody wants to register, the information's on the web, website.
Where is that being held?
It's going to be at Cubby Park. And it's drive-in, so people can stay in their cars, or if it's warm enough, they can come and sit in front of their cars as long as they're socially distanced and right in front of their area. So.
Okay.
What I got.
Yeah. You have an update on the signage for that part?
Um, it's in. Um, it just needs to be installed. DeRachio kind of hid it was supposed to be, but then guys have been doing storm cleanup, so.
Any other staff?
Yeah, this is Mike, Corrin West Branch Police Department. I, uh, want to thank, uh, Matt Goodell for all his work that he's done on the cleanup. Uh, I personally experienced, uh, his cleanup and, uh, behind my house, there was a tree that was down. And I estimated two days to get it taken apart and out of there. And he was, had it done two, three hours. So I think Matt Goodell did a wonderful job. Also, we had a head-on crash today, uh, south of, uh, West Branch. And, uh, as always, uh, the West Branch Fire Department did an awesome job. I want to thank them for their professionalism and the job, the jobs they do. Uh, it was, it's phenomenal, the number of times they get called out. I think last week, there was one day they got called out for, uh, I think up to five times. And I just want to reach out and thank the West Branch Fire Department for doing a good job.
Hey, good comment. Uh, anyone else, staff?
Might as well. Um, I guess I should tell everybody, we're pretty much done with the actual cleanup of trees. We're going to come back starting next week. We have a lift and we're going to go through and just anything that's hanging, we're going to remove. Um, and that'll probably be a big chunk of the week next week. And then we'll be back on track with our normal, normal work. We pretty much haven't. We've done what we needed to do, but there's a lot of stuff that we haven't been able to get to. So we'll start line painting. Um, we did get the new, um, mower and we took that out once and it did an excellent job. So, so that'll work out good for us. Um, but yeah, we'll, we'll be getting back on track here in the next, after next week and hopefully be done with tree work for a while.
So I've been asked, how much longer are we going to be done picking up stiffs, sticks in a week?
Um, we're still picking them up.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we, we'll still pick them up, but we're only going to do pickups on Monday, our yard waste day. And we were picking up everything, no matter how they threw it out. We'd kind of prefer that at this point, they start using the yard waste bags. And if somebody has a whole tree or something bigger like that, if they want to let us know ahead of time, so we can kind of schedule something with them, we can come out and get it for them.
Okay. When will the vacuum cleaner start going around again?
Um, we, we did the street sweeper and we ran the leaf back one time. We'll probably just hold off on running the leaf back again until leaves actually start falling. It won't pick up sticks or anything like that. So we had a lot of stuff mixed in with leaves and it made it hard to pick up. But we, yeah, that normally about mid, mid-October.
Okay. Thank you all.
Yup.
Um, one thing that I wanted to bring up was in, in our future, we, we've had some equipment, you know, askings for small item equipment stuff. I think we should have a, a dollar amount that's in their budget and they can, they can buy the piece of equipment they think they need that's going to save them money because they've been renting it or hiring somebody to do it. I think that should, unless it's a high-dollar item, that's something, if it's in their budget, they don't need to bring it to the council.
I thought we said like two thousand, twenty-five hundred at one time. We weren't going to.
That don't take much though.
They're not going to buy much.
If you're going to buy major equipment, twenty-five hundred dollars is nothing.
Yeah, I'm thinking like minimum five thousand to seventy-five hundred or something like that. And they're the ones that got to come to us at the end of the year and say, well, you know, we had to buy this, we had to buy that, but we're out of money. And we can say, well, you bought all that stuff, you're not going to get any more money.
As long as we know that it's being bought, I guess, that's a good idea.
The, the reason mower thing was, was a new thing that came up after the budget had been approved. So, but we had equipment replacement funds that, uh, that they had been saving up. So it wasn't quite budgeted, but the funds were available to, to, to reserve. But it still comes out of the operating budget.
Sure.
So if we go over, we may have to amend the budget anyway.
And they have to come to, I mean, they're going to have to explain to us why they were over the budget.
Well, but that's, so what? So what if they got what they wanted? You know, that's kind of like, ask for forgiveness, not permission.
Next year, you're going to have to cut some stuff.
Well, last year was salt. We, I think we had to spend extra salt.
And we tried a different mixture of salt, which cost a little bit more than served, that served us better. So. I, I mean, typically, I think we kind of err with there, but when we, if we think it's something that's a little different and you may not know about it, then typically err on the side of just bringing it forward. So we try not to argue down with a bunch of the small stuff, but if you don't know, you know about it, and you want to know about it.
Okay, so that's kind of your call. The department has its call.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Okay, okay. And then I think we, uh, I've kind of been talking with Marty a little bit, with his little superintendent about, uh, intersection and. I don't know if you want to talk about the county coming to town too.
And that was my, one of my comments.
I'll let you talk.
Well, the intersection's a little different. Okay, I had a nice conversation with the Johnson County engineer. Hoover Highway should be open in November. It's going to have a four-foot paved shoulder and a four-foot gravel shoulder beyond that, which is great. They're going to grade for an off-road trail, but they're just going to seat it for now. That's a whole different set of money, whole different funding source to pave a trail from Iowa City to West Branch. And then they're going to pick it up again next summer and keep on coming to West Branch. Whereas at that time, there's the Cedar Johnson intersection that will have probably a decision to make how that, they're going to flatten the hill and they can either straighten the curve. For the most part, if they straighten that curve out, then they got to get into our main street a little bit to straighten. They're going to have to straighten part of West Branch's street. So I said, great, you guys can knock yourself out. If it's three hundred feet or four hundred, five hundred feet of West Branch Street, go ahead. Please do. And, uh, so his next comment was, well, we might have to ask West Branch for some help on that. So.
We'll sign whatever you need.
Or they leave the curve as it is and not change West Branch's street at all. Because it, West Branch's street curves to the south a little bit before it winds around. So anyway, we'll have a decision to make there at some point.
So I got a question. I was going to bring this up and I doubt anybody in here knows the answer, but. So I was taking back roads like Highway twenty-two down from Watcher towards Clooney, Womack area. And I was going through some little podunk city. I can't remember what the name of it was. Had a great, brand-new, beautiful road, curb and gutter. And, you know, this is a little town that's got a, their, their town hall is literally eight-by-ten shed. You know, they ain't got no money. They ain't.
State highway.
Why the hell they paying for that?
State highway, Highway twenty-two.
Well, but.
Same as thirty-eight through Tipton.
So how come we can't get help when they run I eighty down our main street? How come we can't get some help to get, to get our road shored up a little bit?
Um, Scheckinger actually asked that question. You won that call?
Yeah, yeah.
Few months ago and, uh.
I, I won't say they said no, but they, they did a lot of him in the phone and that didn't sound like a yes, but I, I think it was, uh, they was making the argument that, um, we were going to be experiencing more traffic than normal because of the.
And we got a turning high school issue.
And the high school and all those things going on. And he thought that we should be able to be, uh, open for some, a special pot of money that they have for those kind of things. So I didn't hear no, but I heard like it might, it might be a hard, a hard uphill act.
So.
Well, that's not an official bypass. We'll just go out and put a fire truck. Yeah, fire truck.
Yeah, the official bypass is really sick.
They can go Highway six.
That's an official bypass.
That is true, that is true.
Well, one thing we could do to make, just to help ourselves would be every time the traffic's diverted through town, we, um, document it and have pictures and still hope it happens ten or fifteen, twenty times in, in the span of them redoing their interstate. We have.
Yeah.
Have a good cause.
Yeah, we, I, because what, what we also know that is they can say all they want, the official route is Route six, but that's not going to happen. And everybody, GPS is going to take them straight on down Main, so.
Keep one of those local traffic warning signs. We're lucky it hasn't happened with Hoover Highway closed, because GPS doesn't say that that's closed all the time.
Yeah.
We're lucky.
Yeah, you're right.
Who says it hasn't? I just didn't know. I mean, it's hard to believe that it's gone two or three months without something happening.
Yeah, we got two months ago.
To the county would be is, as a city, we've done street projects where we've had to pay for extra stuff because we've done a project that interrupted maybe a property owner that needed a new, new, uh, driveway that ended up taking half of their driveway. This is a project to me that the county is bringing to us. They're going to disturb our town and they, they.
Yeah, he was warmed up to my.
Or, or we'll pay for it, just say pay for half of Cedar Johnson Road. That'll be our exchange.
That was another discussion. Cedar Johnson Road may still be half of, uh, half in Johnson.
It is, yeah.
It is.
We may, no, I mean, I'm not sure we have annexed completely all of Cedar Johnson Road.
Not right now we haven't. It's, it is like you said, it's half and half.
Yeah, but we've got that waiver that we, well, we took their thousand dollars.
There is that.
We'll take care of it forever.
Yeah, for a thousand bucks.
We'll probably have a sit-down at some point with the engineers over there and Scheckinger. We'll get one of you guys there. Okay, so that's coming. It's kind of exciting. I said we don't need a roundabout, so I'm giving up on it. I don't need a roundabout.
Put a roundabout in, they won't have to worry about interstate driving. And maybe we put one down there and they end up.
They might want.
Where they're going to put the, we do road in front of your house. We can put a roundabout.
In front of my house.
You want one some.
You got his microphone there.
She may be giving up on that resistance.
Oh, okay.
So getting back to the, uh, school intersection.
Yeah.
I don't know how everybody feels, but I'm, I'm going to put my two cents out there. Um, this is a project, this, that section of road has not been on our radar at all. Um, I think that the cheaper way to go, because it's something that's probably not going to be on our radar for ten years and whatever. If we do it the cheapest way, it should last to ten years. And then in ten years, we can look at it and go. Okay, this is what we need to do. Now, the county does something different that might help change, but.
Well, they're not going that far. The county would never go that far, but.
Well, I don't know how far, I don't know what the distance is between the end of, into that intersection to where the, the county's going to come to. It might be another couple hundred feet. And it's like, well, that's kind of a no-brainer. Then we do the whole thing, but.
Okay, so that's your thoughts on the.
And, and talking with Marty, um, I also mentioned that maybe we just set a dollar amount and they take care of the rest. So if there's any contingencies, it's all theirs. He was, he sounded like he was for that. So if we want to come up with a.
Our, our contribution, our, our dollar contribution toward the turn lane. Okay.
And he would still do the three years, no matter what we do. He would still do the three years.
So why don't you guys talk amongst yourselves privately sometime and maybe agree upon a dollar amount. I don't want to do it in public meeting right now.
I know.
But, uh, is that appropriate? Right, I know, yeah. Okay.
He, he's just, he wants to get it in their budget so they can, they can budget it. So they kind of.
So do we. Okay, good comment. Um, what else have I got? So we got Bruce Barnhart's subdivision out there. We're, we're gonna, he's gonna present it to us and it's just information. There's another little one by Oasis apparently. I don't know anything about.
This one is the residential split.
Oh. So who notified us of that? Did Johnson County?
Yeah, came through Johnson, came through email from him through.
See, Cedar County's already approved.
Yeah, this one, the paper works.
They didn't tell us one thing about it. Cedar County did. Little myth, myth about that.
I thought I saw something in the paper several months ago.
Several months ago.
For a public hearing on the rezoning possibility.
That might've been a year ago even. Are we supposed to jump on that and request? I suppose we should have a question here. Okay. Greenview Connection, Shekinger.
I didn't get to talk to him today. Okay, oh, Tom, why did I do that? So I'll talk to him. I'll talk to him. I've been calling.
Cause they're gonna dig up that water line pretty soon and move it over.
They're moving along, yeah.
If we're gonna do it, would we think about that this fall?
I would say if they're there, let's have them.
Have them bust it through.
That's great. Let's have them great water right there.
We gotta get, get bids from them? Do we get?
I thought that guy from A, who's that from Axiom?
Axiom.
Ryan.
Ryan. I thought Ryan was gonna ask him.
Uh, we got Shekinger on it. So.
I'll talk to him. What's the best way to go about it?
Yeah.
They're moving along pretty quick.
They're moving quick and they're gonna pay by the end of October, I've been told. So we need to have a plan in place before them.
That siren needs to be moved.
We should start moving that stuff if we're gonna do it.
That's all we need to move. They're gonna move the fire hydrant.
Well, there's gas line and there's electrical stuff to be moved probably. A transformer.
I think they're gonna move the left.
The street light? They're not gonna do it. No. Just the water main. There might be a gas line to move too. Maybe. Unless it's under the pavement, I don't know. Okay, that's all I got about there. Anything else? During anyone?
Two moved.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.